Okay, great. Good evening, I'm calling to order the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025. We are live and we have folks dialing in remotely. First item on the agenda this evening is 132 Turnpike Road, Capital Group Properties, Special Permit. Laura, do you want to read the public notice?
Sure. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the McCullough Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. With regard to the petition of Capital Group Properties, 132 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow signs above the maximum allowable height. The property is located in the Business Highway Zoning District and relief is requested under Section 174-11D.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Shannon Boyce, I'm the Real Estate Permitting Manager for Capital Group Properties as the managing agent for 132 Turnpike Road. And we're here about a special permit because we have several, they've been permitted, but they're non-conforming signs on the building. And we are in the process of getting now the permit for another tenant, Fusion, when Chris Lund brought to our attention, hey, you don't have a special permit to have signs above 20 feet. So that's why I'm out here, is to basically request that special permit so that we can get all those signs back into compliance.
And do you have anything you want to present, or, I mean?
No, as far as I read through with the planning board, what their responses were, and I agree to all that, including the 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM cutoff for any lights on the signs, things, it seemed very reasonable to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how the previous signs were put up without any?
Oh, they were permitted. Yeah, the building department permitted them.
Interesting, okay.
So it's very interesting, so it seems like there was a misstep on both sides. Both did not seem to realize that a special permit was required.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
All four of them that were on the building were actually permitted.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I did read through, so you were in front of the planning boards on January 27th?
Yes.
And they looked at these different criteria, does it fit, is the size relative?
Yes, the only thing that's non-conforming literally is that every single sign is above 20 feet.
Above 20. So that, is it?
At least it's consistent.
The size of the sign is not really the issue?
Yeah, they're all, yes, exactly, they're all within the size and sizing and everything, the lighting and the way they're set up, everything is correct. The only issue was, every one of them is above 20 feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
We did, we did get, we did receive one email objecting to it, I don't know if we have anything else. I mean, that, this is a site that, I'm just gonna say, I go by it pretty often, it doesn't stand out to me as, oh my God, this thing is like in my face.
That's not a great.
But, yeah. But I think first we'll just let the other board members ask questions if they have any.
Sure.
Start with Doug.
How big is the tenant Fusion? How many square feet do they occupy?
Oh, Fusion, I have the parking calculation here. I should anyway, let me see, where did I put my parking calculation? Oh, can you pull that up? Are you able to do that? That's part of the, I don't have it in my thing. But I did do a parking calculation and I included it, I believe in the planning board app, I thought I put a copy in here too. And that showed the square footage, the total square footage with the 20% reduction.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I'm looking for it.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 you're fine.
Thank you.
And just for clarity, are we just approving the Fusion sign, or all of the signs above 20 feet?
So, we're doing the special permit allowing for that whole building to have signs above 20 feet, so that should basically retroactively cover them all, is my understanding?
Okay, those are my only questions.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
I don't really have any questions, I know we've had a couple of sign things in the past, whether it be size, illumination and the such, and typically it seems, as long as it's not anything crazy, it's, I mean, again, I've driven by there.
Yeah.
Often, often it doesn't, never really noticed or has it stand out on me, I mean, yes, it is up there, but.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't have any questions or concerns.
I think Viewpoint did a pretty good job designing them, they look nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Jamie?
I read through the application, I don't, I don't have any issue with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike?
No, I don't, I don't have any issues whatsoever, I don't have any, my question was already answered, so that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, just very briefly, the planning board review, they looked at sign scale is in reasonable relation to the development scale, viewer distance and travel speed. Second, size, shape and placement serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building. Three, the sign design is in harmony with other signage on the same or adjacent structures. Four, the sign materials, colors, lettering, style, illuminations and form are reasonably compatible with building design, neighborhood context and use. And five, the sign, size, location, design and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicle or vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Yeah.
The planning board checked, yeah, in other words, they agreed with all those elements, so as we said, we've seen it, we don't really have any objections. We did have the one email, now do we have somebody who is raising a hand online?
Trying to step through. Oh, Doris is here, hi Doris. I do not have any hands raised. I do want to say, the email that I forwarded you guys.
Yeah.
I did speak a little bit more, they had thought that the signs were above the building, above the hidden buildings.
Oh, right.
So I clarified, I had sent them a copy of the application, and once they looked at it, they said they have no objections.
Okay.
Beautiful, thank you.
Oh, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
I don't have the parking calculations, I know they were in there for 257.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember them for the sign, I remember them being more relevant for your next hearing.
Okay, yeah, I do have them for the next hearing, hooray. Thank you.
All right, well, I know, I don't have to ask if any of the audience objects, since we don't have anybody here, so I think we could probably make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay, Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
I think she's muted.
It looked like I was.
Doris, you're muted.
I think we have to actually hear it, didn't we go through that?
You're muted.
I'm gonna say William's aye, but let's get to Doris, if we can, so we can hear you, Doris.
I'm not sure where she's.
She's trying, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I can.
You know what?
I can put her as an abstain, you have.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. We still actually have a few minutes, but.
Oh, she just did a thumbs up. Just back out.
All right, so, yeah, just, so that would, that will close the public hearing, we actually have five votes for that. So, hearing no objections, I think we should probably have a motion to approve the special permit as written.
I make a motion to approve the special permit as written.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to approve the special permit as written, has a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay, Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
William's aye, Mike?
Aye.
And Doris?
Yeah.
All right, it has to be the same thing, five, zero, with an extension. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so it is 7:11, and I think our next one is at 7:15, meaning?
Oh, I'm on load it now.
Ah, there she is. Thank you, Doris. But we are gonna take a four-minute recess and restart at 7:15.
Do we have anything that we need to administratively do?
We could, if you want.
Actually, that's a, that's a great idea, Paul.
I'm a thinker.
You are.
Moving.
Now, so we do have approval of meeting minutes from January 22nd, that was largely the, our rules and regulations, wasn't it, for 40B? Where Jay went, you know, very extensively through the work that he and Laura had done. I went through the minutes, I, to me, captured what we talked about, I don't, I didn't look to make sure every single subject was covered exactly, but I think we all know Laura does a very good job with that, so I don't know if anybody has any questions or noted anything in the minutes?
I did not.
Okay.
Nope.
Mike and Doris?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so, hearing no objections, we could take a.
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, motion to approve the minutes from January 22nd, 2025, has been made with a second, all in favor respond with aye, opposed nay, Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
William's aye, Mike?
Aye.
And Doris?
Aye.
All right, there we go. All right, now we're up to 7:12, inefficiency here. Administrative updates, what do we have?
So, just our next meetings, we have one in two weeks on the 26th for the 250 Turnpike 40B. Then after that, our next one is March 19th. We will have one public hearing continued from tonight, if you guys vote on that, and then we'll have two other special permit applications for that. My question for you guys is, if you have a preference on location for that? We've been scheduling in-person, if there's a 40B component? So I don't know if you guys want to keep the 19th in-person, in case we add on 250 Turnpike, or if you want to do it.
I will likely not be available March.
Oh, Mike?
Oh, sorry. Just, I will likely not be available March 19th, but that, that's fine. We got Doug, so. I'm assuming we have Doug.
So, if you, if we do 250 on the 19th and you're not here, you won't be able to vote on the final.
That's okay.
Wow. She gave that up rather easily.
Well, I mean, Doug is, is well qualified.
I'm not arguing with your point, but.
I'll stay healthy.
Yes, yes, please stay out of the bus lane, if anything else that might keep you healthy.
So what was the question?
So, for the March 19th meeting, do you want me to schedule it in-person? Because by the time I need to send out public hearing notices, I need to have a location for the meeting.
Or just schedule it like online, on Zoom?
Right.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me, so what everyone else, what would you like?
I prefer Zoom, but if there's a 40B component, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know.
Which is, right now is unknown, right? We already have.
We won't know for two weeks.
We won't know for another two weeks, so it's a potential at this point.
At that point, I need to send out the public hearing notices. Yep?
Laura, for the 19th, I'm remote.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Whatever is, is.
Yeah, I'm indifferent, but if it is, if we think there's a chance of the 40B, I think you probably want to be in person.
Okay.
That's the only risk, I would say, because it's hard to hear one of those cases, and there could be a butters and neighbors, so.
Yeah.
I mean, but it, but it's a hybrid anyway, so people, you know, if people have to be remote, that's fine.
Okay, I'll keep it in-person, and then that way, if you guys decide to add on 250 Turnpike, we can, we're not scrambling. Cool. Also, there was a bill filed by the governor to make remote meetings or hybrid meetings permanent. I know we were talking a little bit about this before, but I don't have any update on it, I don't know if and when it's gonna pass, I don't know if they're gonna extend what's currently in place. So if it doesn't go into effect by March 31st, we will need to have meetings in-person, in that we need the chair, sorry David, and a quorum in-person. Other people can attend remotely, but we have to have the chair and quorum in-person. So just keep that in mind for April.
And a quorum is, there's four of us, yes, so.
There's what?
Four of us, so like what we have tonight would be legal, so.
Yeah.
And those attending remotely, they're still, like, they still count, they're still voting, it's still?
Yeah, but we just have to have a quorum in-person.
Okay.
Can you remind, what day is the April?
16? I think it did it the week before April vacation.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Okay. I mean, I don't, I don't mind being here in-person, it's easy enough for me, and not scheduled to be away anywhere, so I should be okay.
All right, I'll keep you updated as I hear more, and then I have other updates, but we can.
Okay.
Do those after.
Yes. Now we're back, we never really were in recess, 7:17, okay, so, bear with me for a moment. I kind of know what's next, but. Okay, so, next we have 257 Turnpike Road, again, Capital Group Properties, Special Permit. This one about multiple principal uses, can you read the public notice, Laura?
Sure. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the McCullough Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, at 7:15 PM. With regard to the petition of Capital Group Properties, 257 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow multiple principal uses. The property is located in Business Highway Zoning District and relief is requested under Section 174-8C2 and Section 174-8.5.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I guess for the record again, I'm Shannon Boyce, I'm the Real Estate Permitting Manager for Capital Group Properties as managing agent for 257 Turnpike Road LLC. And the main use that we're looking to add here is the office, I mean, the clinic medical testing one under B7, but I added in all the others, because I just kind of looked through the list of what you could use in that district and try to, which ones seemed to fit the best. That way I don't have to come back here and bother you every time we have a prospective tenant that might fill one of those.
Okay.
So, the most important is the clinical one, but if you guys agree that those would be good fits for that location, then that would be great. In my understanding is, Chris Lund said that each time I have a prospective tenant, what I'll do is, I'll make a new parking calculation for him based on whichever use it is.
Okay.
And then I can go to him with the permit thereafter.
Okay.
So.
All right, all right, well, that sounds pretty thorough. Okay, and what are the, what are the current uses there now?
The current use is office, bank, but I did a parking calculation and I calculated based on one of them being a B7 really, and it's only my opinion, they're permitted and occupied to be there, but it's a dental lab.
Okay.
It's a lab. So, you know, so I did the calculation just.
Okay. I mean, we don't have to.
We're getting some background. Go ahead.
Oh, I lost my thunder. Yeah, when I did the parking calculation, that's it. I did it based on that particular suite being a B7, to make sure that if we get Optum in, that there's plenty of parking, and that worked out.
And sorry, when you say B7?
B7 is medical dental, under that district.
Yep.
And then I did it for Optum, B7 as well.
Okay.
And it works out, we have enough parking spaces, so fantastic.
Okay.
But my understanding is each time we get a new tenant, I'll adjust my parking calculation and give it to Chris Lund with our permit request and go forward from there.
Okay.
And I don't know if, it's probably more that I have to request it, not something you guys would do, but the other ones that I requested for uses, if you think that there are additional uses in that list that might work out, you know, and you want to add them in so that I'm not knocking on your door with another tenant down the road?
Yeah.
You know, I'll add it, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Is it possible to see the list, like, over the screen?
For sure.
I'm going to scroll through this before I share it, so I don't make you all.
Yes, those are the other three, the bulleted ones that I suggested, the retail, sales and newspaper, job printing or whatnot, those seem like they would be a decent fit for that type of office building. The other ones did not seem like fits, but I don't know, if you think they could be, you know, and you want to add them in, that'd be great, probably make things a little easier down the road.
So, I mean, parking-wise, where, where does it stand now? Because this is really what it's about.
So, right now, it stands.
Is having enough parking for all these different uses, right?
Exactly, so, and this is what I explained to them.
Yep.
Is that just because we're purr for these, doesn't mean we're gonna be able to get a tenant in, because when I do the parking calculation, if it goes beyond it, then we can't. Right now, for this, if we were to add Optum in, and we were to acknowledge, yeah, the dental lab is a lab, then there's plenty of parking, it actually works out, so it's fine. But as we move through with other tenants, I'm gonna have to check the parking calculation, and they may not, even if we're approved to have them, it may not be a fit.
Okay, and that, that's the discussion you had with the building commissioner?
Yeah, Chris Lund, when we met with him to figure out this whole situation.
Okay. Okay. Doug, any questions?
Yeah, so just a couple of quick questions, so I'm just making sure I'm reading this right, so currently you have 163 available spaces between 257 and 259, right?
Yes.
And then by approving this, you'd be at 157 spaces required, and you have one available
Yes.
suite that's out there, but you include that in the parking count too as well, which is.
Yes, I did, yeah, to make sure that, you know.
Okay.
All the little bases are covered.
Yep. Some questions specifically, so what type of lab testing is the tenant going to be doing? It just says lab, but do you know what they're gonna be doing in the lab?
My understanding is it's just blood work, basically taking blood samples, and then they send them up for processing, and they're gonna be a lot like Epiphany Health, who was recently, Chris Lund approved occupancy for them, but basically under office, because they just do referral services, they weren't doing any clinical in office. So Optum will still be doing mostly referral, but they'll have a lab.
Okay. And then, it sounds like it's pretty small, but do you know how much space of there is going to be for the lab use versus the balance of the tenant?
You know what? I wish I had asked for a thing, I don't, it's literally one small room, I saw the floor print, I wish I included it in here.
No, but that.
But it's a small room in the office, yeah.
And then, it sounds like, again, it's lab work, so it's just gonna be more moderate deliveries or going out type of stuff.
Mostly referring them out, yep.
Okay. So, I guess my initial comments are, I mean, as we all know, office is in a, you know, is in a very challenged state, right? It's actually nice to see that you guys have all but one space filled, which is, you know, I think is rare in this market. So I'm definitely a proponent of being flexible, you know, in terms of the uses, and clinic or medical testing laboratory, I mean, it's not that broad, and so, I mean, if they're doing blood work, I don't have any issue with that. Of the others, newspaper job, I'm going in random order, but newspaper, job, printing and publishing, don't really have much of an issue with that, I'm not sure how much demand there'll be for that, but I don't have an issue for that as a board member. Again, retail, sales, whether it's involved manufacturing or not manufacturing, again, if they lose a first-floor tenant and a retail tenant wants to come in, as long as the parking count's being met, like, I don't, I mean, we have other buildings that are mixed-use that have retail in the base and, you know, have office in the top, so, and I think recently, so, and I don't think it's gonna be detrimental, I mean, it's right off of Route 9, that type of stuff, so I'm generally in favor of it, and, you know, I mean, I like to have tenants usually in front for the other uses per se, but again, you know, it's kind of hard in this market to be, you know, they gotta be fast on their feet, you know?
Yeah.
And it spooks tenants if you can't do it, right? And you have to go get an approval to get done, so, but anyways, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Paul?
It was kind of my thought exactly too, is I know that it's difficult right now with office.
Yeah.
And such, so if we're having a good use for it, that does not adversely affect things, I'm in favor of it also, so.
Thank you.
And then likewise with some of the other things mentioned, I don't feel that would have adverse effect on things, and if it fills space that exists and it's a good use of it, then I'm okay with it.
Beautiful, thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the lab that we're discussing. I think B2 definitely makes sense as well, and B3 and B4, I think I'm fine with it, I don't know why that term manufacturing.
It feels warehousey or something.
Yeah, it feels like, could there be chemicals involved? Could there be noises involved? Could there be vibrations involved, like that?
Yeah.
That, I guess, kind of sticks out to me.
Is there a way to approve that, but then have like a little exception, like, no thing like that, or is that not a thing for special permits? No hazardous?
And I'm not set on, it's just, that was my initial thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm envisioning like a jeweler that.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Jewelry in the back and then retail in the front.
I like that it says no more than four persons engaged in manufacturing.
Yeah.
That, that does.
And I do think if you drop down to the C-list, that's where you have the bigger manufacturers and the, like, the crazier things, that wouldn't work in an office. I looked through that one too, and I was like, you know.
But those are just my thoughts.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, no, I really feel like we've kind of covered my primary issues and concerns on this. I really don't think I have anything to add, and I have no objection to the lab.
Thank you.
Doris? Find that mute button.
So I don't have any general concerns, except for when I hear lab, we're not producing any pharmaceuticals?
Right, no production, just drawing blood samples.
Okay, so, no, I think it's a good use, no general objections, and everything else was covered by different members, so basically I'm in favor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't have anything more to add, I think the other board members have covered pretty well all the questions that I might have had, so I don't, I don't really see an objection. Do we have anybody raising a hand in the Zoom?
No.
Not, okay. So, I think we're at the stage then where you could close the public hearing? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made with a second, all in favor, respond with aye, opposed nay, Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
William's aye, Mike?
Aye.
Doris?
She's unmuting. Oh, thumbs up again.
Yeah. Okay. Back to the beach. Okay, we'll take her as an abstention again. So, we have a motion to approve the, this was a special permit, yes.
It is a special permit.
Special permit as, as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit as written.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the special permit has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose nay. Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
William's eye. And Mike?
Aye.
Doris? Find the mute button. Another thumbs up, okay. Somewhere on a beach.
Make it work.
Okay, well, that will be, that'll be five zero with an abstention. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Um, so what is the process for, like, do we have to wait, um, in order to get this tenant in a certain amount of time?
Yeah, so what's gonna happen is we're gonna draft the written decision. Um, we have fourteen days to do that. I try really hard to have them done quicker than that. So hopefully next week.
Beautiful.
Um, and then we'll file that with the town, town clerk. There's a twenty-day appeal period.
Okay.
So I would say probably wait until after that.
Like April, probably April first or something?
Yeah, and I'll email you with all the dates, and when I file it, you'll get a copy, and I'll let you know when the appeal period is.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I think I'm seeing you guys next month, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so we've covered the minutes, we covered the administrative. I don't know if there was anything else.
Yeah, do six Lorenzo for the continuance.
Oh, sorry about that, yes, of course.
What time is that at?
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty, guess what?
Perfect timing.
Seven thirty, so.
That's how we plan it.
Yeah, don't you like the way that works?
And where is Doris, by the way? Is that just a screenshot, or is that like, she's there?
I think it's a.
I think it's a screenshot.
It's just the background, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for reminding me.
No, you're still on mute. I don't know why you don't take just your mute off.
Okay, so yes, we, at seven thirty, we have six Lorenzo Drive Bartolini Properties on behalf of Brendan Griffin's special permit. This is about allowing more than three garage bays, but the applicant requested a continuation until, you said it was March nineteenth?
I still have to read this. Do you want me to read this?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Uh, Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the McCallum Hearing Room, Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty five, at seven thirty P M. With regard to the petition of Bartolini Properties LLC, on behalf of owner Brendan Griffin, six Lorenzo Drive, Southborough, Mass. Petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow more than three garage bays. The property is located in the residential A zoning district, and relief is requested under section one seventy four dash eight point two B twelve.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for reminding me of that.
You're welcome.
So, his, again, his request is to continue until March.
Continue until our March meeting.
And that's, and that's our normally scheduled meeting for March, okay. Okay, um, so that's the request. Does the, anybody on the board have any objections to that?
I do not.
No.
Okay, all right, hearing none. We leave the hearing open, but we just need a motion to continue the hearing until March nineteenth. Do we have a time or no?
You can set it for whenever. We can do it right at seven if you want.
We'll do, yeah, we can do it at seven.
I make a motion to continue the hearing to March nineteenth at seven P M.
Second.
All right, motion to continue has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose nay. Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
William's eye. Mike?
Aye.
And Doris is still muted.
Okay, all right, so.
And thus far, we have nothing else, we have nothing already on the agenda that's been given a time slot?
No, I haven't scheduled out the public hearings.
That's the first, that's the first, okay.
So we'll have two others, but I can do those.
They'll do after that, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we're not telling two people at seven and getting mad.
Yeah.
I have that.
No, no, no.
All right, so, that definitely gets us to the end of the business property before the board, unless, I don't think we have any other, anything else to update, right? We went through the.
I have a couple of things for you guys.
You do, okay.
I'll make it quick.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to make you guys aware, for administrative updates, um, the deadline for us to receive the easement plan for the one twenty forty B project is the seventeenth. Um, I was told to expect it this week, so we can add that to a future agenda, because you guys do need to review and approve it. So, just so you know, you'll be getting that soon. Something that has come up over recent days with ADUs, because the new regulations went into effect. Um, and those new regulations made previous conditions on, like, previously issued accessory apartment decisions. It rendered some of those conditions unenforceable, so things like, um, you know, one unit must be owner occupied, or, you know, conditions as far as like the rental use. Those are now prohibited by the state, so those have become unenforceable. So something I'm trying to work through with Jay, Tallerman, and Chris Lund is the appropriate process. If somebody has an ADU that meets the requirements of a protected use ADU, but has these conditions, how we move forward with that. So I just wanted to make you guys aware that that's something that we're working on in the background. I'm not sure if it's something that would require a public hearing for like a formal modification. I'm trying to avoid that if legally we can, because it's expensive to do. And, you know, these homeowners, this is through no fault of their own, so I don't want them paying five, six, seven hundred dollars for the public hearing, the recording, all of that, if they don't have to. So I'll update you guys more on that as I find out, but I have one person who has called about it, which is good, because hopefully we can figure this out before we get flooded with those. Um, what else? I think that was it. Town meeting's on April seventh, so all those good things, ADU by law, shared parking by law, those things will be at our town meeting.
Yeah, what's the, um, what's the status of the shared parking? I know that was on the agenda for the zone, uh, for the planning board on Monday as well, but.
Yeah.
Did not.
I think they're looking at whether or not it should be a special permit, or if it can just be conditions within the site plan. Because they're trying to make the balance, they don't want to make it more onerous for people to do, you know, so a separate special permit is a bigger process.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
They're trying to figure that out.
Okay, very good. So, and our next meeting is in two weeks, and that is, uh, that is two fifty Turnpike. We'll be here.
It'll be here. Um, we received a whole bunch of new documents for that today, so I put those in the sharepoint.
Wait, that's more than seven days in advance. They know that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Very good, yeah.
So.
Okay, very good, good.
There's that.
Okay.
So I didn't email you guys about it, because I didn't want to.
Okay.
Add confusion to tonight, so.
Did anybody else have any concerns they wanted to help the need to discuss? ADUs are going well, Mike?
What's that, the ADUs are going well? Again, I think, uh, I think we're actually, for Southborough, we're way ahead of schedule. Um, I, I, I think the bylaws, um, really thoughtful. I think they're right there, and, uh, assuming there are any substantive to change, it's obvious supporting that for town meeting and. I do think it'll be interesting to see how they're gonna address some of those. You know, let's say there's a deed restriction or a certain restriction on title, but I think those are kind of easy to figure out once we know what the heck we're doing.
All right, then. I don't think we have any other business before the board. Paul?
Oh, it's go time.
Go time.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn has been made with a second. All those in favor, respond with aye. Oppose nay. Doug?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
William's eye. Mike?
Aye.